For the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
May be seated.
Okay. Um, are there any changes or revisions to the regular or consent agendas?
Yep, um, I do. One second, I finished typing something here. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, I have three changes, actually, until the last minute of these. Um, um, I need to remove items I and K because there actually are no changes being recommended for those items now at this point. And then, um, I need to add item M, which is the consideration of the five-star services agreement.
Okay.
Which has been updated in your package.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, I will take a motion then to approve the regular and consent agendas as amended.
I move to approve the agendas as amended.
I'll second it.
Wade made the motion to approve the regular and consent agendas as amended. Lee seconded that. Roll call this evening will be vote by member. So, Lee, we'll start with you.
Yeah.
Wade?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, and Joe?
I say, uh, due to mitigation of both any concerns regarding conflict interest.
Thank you. Recognitions and information. Anything?
Not on that.
No recognitions this evening, financial update?
Yep, uh, board packets, you have the latest financials through the end of August twenty twenty-five. Um, and as always, there's the claim dockets in there, the payrolls, all the cash flows, all our transfers and the fund reports. And, uh, as reflected in those reports, all the income, expenses, and our fund balances are continuing to track as forecasted.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, legislative update, Wade?
Uh, just as you know, on Monday, I attended the delegate assembly, and then I guess every August, ISBA Legislative Committee meets to make a list of their two thousand twenty-six or their that upcoming year's legislative priorities. At the assembly, then all delegates for the state met to approve their two thousand twenty-six agenda. And they break down the legislative priorities into three parts. Uh, the Indiana Code Title Twenty, Education Regulatory Relief, they'll be watching, uh, TIF taxing matters, and then various education matters. If anyone would want any of the subtopics under those, feel free to let me know, I can can share those items with you. I wasn't aware they took such a proactive approach in, uh, watching potential bills for the upcoming legislative session. So I just found the overall delegate assembly very informative, and, uh, it was great to be a part of.
Good, thank you. Um, project update, Dr. Smith and Dr. Penrod.
Yep, uh, both of us attended our, uh, bi-weekly construction meeting th- this morning. And, uh, just have a few updates for you. You can see that that's kind of nice now that we're above ground, so you can see a lot of the changes as they go. And, uh, we're just about dry into the field house. We're just finishing up that, uh, northeast corner, getting that in, and then the doors will be in, and then we'll be dry, which will be great because we can work in all weather conditions. Um, yeah, you can see a lot of the concrete around, or all the concrete around the field house has been poured. So curbs, the sidewalks, all those are in. All the interior, uh, concrete is poured as well. Um, it's really coming together really, really well. Um, our timeline is looking around mid-November for completion. So, um, just a little bit longer than fall break, but we're in today's day and age of construction, that's not too bad. Um, a lot of other things you're going to start seeing, uh, happen, uh, come together really quickly. All the parking area around the field house, um, will start to take shape in just the next couple of weeks. So that that will happen. Um, we have on, and the interior, you can't see that right now, it's an active construction zone, so it is a hard hat area. So to go in there, you have to be escorted through. So, um, if you want to go through, I'll have to get hard hats and everything to go through there. Um, but they are starting to rough in all the plumbing and the electric and lot of extensive work going on on the inside, which is great to see that all happening and coming together. Um, uh, there are some fine tuning on the, uh, Central Elementary parking lot, just little pieces and parts. Um, the riprap, the stone, and those types of things that that happen in there as well as going in. Um, some minor things on the pool, we've got pump controls, those types of things are happening right now. Um, we are punch listing the pool, um, as of last week. And, uh, let's see, did I get anything? I don't think so, that's pretty much it as of right now. Though you'll see a lot of changes to that area. It'll be, it'll look less constructiony, um, here real soon. So, um, a lot of that, once they get that parking lot done and everything, a lot of the fencing will come down.
What'd you say they're doing to the pool, punch listing?
Yeah, that's the final, the the final part of making sure they're, they're turning it over to us.
Okay.
Okay, um, Dr. Penrod was on that, is he?
Yeah.
Or does he have enough?
I've seen on any other things that you guys gathered from the meeting this morning.
Only the only other thing I thought was nice is, uh, that being out of the ground like the, uh, the contingency is a little less. Don't worry quite so much about it, just take it as everything is like prior to that. Bad soils, maybe not some bad soils, just don't know, so now everything's, uh, the, uh, there's more flexibility and we can use that.
Thank you. Okay, public comment, any? Thank you. Uh, new business, public hearing on the two thousand twenty-six budget capital and bus replacement plans. Dr. Smith?
I will start this off, and we'll hand off here in a little bit. Um, as part of the budget process, every year we conduct a hearing, uh, for the budget. And the budget information has been properly advertised, posted on the website, all the things we needed to do legally. Um, therefore, we just need to, uh, open the hearing to allow for public comment. So I'll let you guys take care of that, and then Dr. Penrod will, um, present his budget, and then, um, we'll allow for public comment.
Okay. Um, so I will take a motion to open the hearing on the two thousand twenty-six budget capital and bus replacement plans.
I make a motion to open the hearing on the two thousand twenty-six budget capital and bus replacement.
I'll second it.
That was Wade, right?
Yes.
I was even watching both of them.
That's roll call vote, too, sorry.
What? Yes.
Sorry.
Um, so roll call vote, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, okay. Um. It's okay.
Dr. Penrod.
Dr. Penrod.
Evening, four dollars to go over tonight, uh, couple capital, uh, well, that's the capital six document, bus replacement document, and what's called four three, and so, capital asset or capital acquisition. But right now, this looks a little thin, obviously, and a little thin on purpose. And the reason is because this is what, uh, probably what we talked about last year is kind of run over, but also lowered that amount, uh, based on what we said in the law act one. The other thing is, this is just, this is just things that we, uh, things that we think we might purchase or put to purpose. The operation's fine, we're bad, it doesn't, uh, we're not, we're not, we're gonna get fifty thousand dollars for technology and position. Many things, which is, uh, the price that is over ten thousand, we're expecting to do over ten thousand. Maybe, yeah, uh, this, this is what we're going to pass is what, what, uh, decrease the most because again, well, that's like, and get too aggressive on the, plus subtracting sort of, then, we can, so we've got, uh, six, eight hundred twenty-seven, eight hundred fifty thousand. Say we don't spend more, but that's kind of overlooked.
Does that take into consideration the bonds? Or no?
No, this one, this one doesn't either, this is just the operations.
Okay, thanks.
And we'll, we'll coordinate that with bond.
Okay.
Like, before we get to the budget part, the, uh, this is the bus replacement plan, we're getting a look at what it's looked like in the past. What uses the same prescribed form, and so we see this, this first column, bus description, the corporation ID that you listed for that bus. And then, uh, type A or type C, and whether it's me or owner, in this case, they're all. These are, uh, those are one thing that are kind of still out of the bargain, we talked about four, three, four, or a bus today. It could take a year or so to get it in. And so, um, these are, uh, reasonable guesses, but obviously, the further out we get, the less, they're less sure, I mean, yeah. So, we'll update that as we go out, you know, two, three, four, five years, but for right now, we're looking at a sixty-six year, they can be like it's in twenty twenty-six, with the options and everything, about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. I think that's, like, conservative, too, like, as far as worst-case scenario. But, uh, you know, when we get, when we get that, because I'm not rushing, but when it comes in, there's been plenty of stories where people may hold back for, you're fifty thousand or sixty thousand, now, there, it's gonna be out thirty-five percent. In which kind of undercover school and be making. And it's probably, there are three, uh, three is exactly what's been, uh, you see, you like the, uh, the tax payers, and then, yeah, box, the hearing, it's, yeah, that's the location of this, the next one, and the adoption. So that's gonna be the twenty-second of October, that place is six o'clock. And then, look at the, you know, max levy in the next box, and the property tax gap as well. So, the tax levy is the amount that you're gonna, that a school's gonna get in the operation, one levy, which is right now here. So, really, you've got two nine three three nine lots six. It doesn't really matter, we could put a hundred and two million, two nine six, I'm gonna get, is, is this the two nine three three six? Off of that. The tax gap, so the tax gap are like if, if someone, they're, they're bill from, their tax bill from all the, whether that's, like, three city counties, town, pools, all that. If their bill generates a two twelve hundred bill, no, they had, so they just paid the two hundred, just go with it. So, the, uh, the thousand, so their max, the one percent, so the two hundred dollars goes away. The two hundred, there's a net setting, example, if you add everybody's two hundred, wherever their figure is, bottom is projected by the PLGF to be three, three hundred eighty-four thousand five, which will tell about that. So, some of that is, uh, some of that is implications of some of black one. Some of that is because they're not sure what AV was gonna grow, so the AV from more than four percent, which is what the, or what the level of growth, then, certain rate will go down, maybe it grows less, or, so this is just, that's sort of what the, what the, uh, the without, you know. With the annual budget, we're gonna, we've got our budget, again, we, I think that this year, we didn't, at least not get a knock to look, but we want to put that in the case, so, to help, so, is what we don't, appropriation it would take, that hearing, or as my hearing in a special meeting, that it could take thirty days to get that processed up. So in this case, we've got, yeah, we're gonna be, we're asking this one. That service, they got a black guy's, in there, four million six seventy-three zero seven five. And that is, uh, likely pretty high, and that's pretty high, because we've got anticipated that payment, the bond that you'll find next. That, uh, can protect for the school, that's the best, should be the most advantageous way to pay that bond. So, but again, I think that's way too high, and the back estimate the cost could be raised at four, nine, two, six, thirteen, yeah. Apparently, it's three four, three million four, forty-seven, fifty-eight, so we see a thirty-nine, so that, that's why, you know, plus that, plus that anticipated payment comes down, get full payment, yeah. More in line with what we used to look at, three, four, three point six, like. And, well, pension debt is no longer, the, but, education fund is nine nine. In the operating, four million three seven, two seventy-three, it raised two nine three three nine. It's two eight, two zero, eight, three, so we're asking for a four point zero one percent increase. The growth quotient's four percent, so why are, why are you asking, why are we asking? That service bump, you know, of four, four decimal points on tax rate. It's from, over four decimal point, great side, your overall tax rate. So, what does it have, the exact, but, so basically, both schools have kind of received one exactly one. They won't be giving their, five hundred dollars under five. It's, yeah, the, the, oh, over max let, they can't make that, it's, it's full. Was, even though this is the max levy this year, that's the slightly under the max levy this year. So again, that's the capital, two nine three three nine six, and it'll likely come in under that, unless there's a perfect equation that happens, it'll likely come in a few, a thousand. But same point, uh, that's, uh, that covers the budget and plans, where we need to have.
Questions, anybody? Um. Public comment here? Is there any public comment? No. Okay. Um, all right, then I will take a motion to close the hearing on the two thousand twenty-five budget capital and bus replacement plans.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing of the two thousand twenty-five budget capital bus replacement.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Holly made the motion to close the hearing on the two thousand twenty-six budget capital and bus replacement plans. Lee seconded that, roll call by? Vote by roll call, sorry, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. I carried. Um, consideration of resolution approving form of lease agreement. Oh, there she is. Hi, Stacy. Thanks for coming.
So, uh, our first part, actually, I have the need for project, but we can do it that way, too. So, with the lease agreement, you know, this is the lease financing, this is for a few months, like, going past construction renovation projects. This is, of course, how you're doing, uh, a separate, that allows it doesn't count on. So, what it will look like is if the building preparation is not already owned, the fortunate, so the elementary school that works in November, then they purchase it from you guys, so we give raise I, which will have special phrases, you can come in and do that, they give form of all set up for you, and then you guys, this school corporation, will lease it back from the building corporation. And then the lease payments come from the tax, that's where all that's coming from, so you guys are going to be moving the phone in this time. Figures and all.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Stacy? All right, I'll take, uh, motion.
I move to approve the resolution approving form of lease agreement.
I'll second it.
Wade made the motion to approve the resolution approving form of lease agreement. Lee seconded that, um, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Lisa votes yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. Item C, consideration of resolution determining need for project, Stacy?
Yeah, that's a little silly, but you do officially have to vote that, yes, there is a need for your project.
Okay. Any, any questions about that?
I move to approve the resolution determining need for project.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Lee made the motion to approve the resolution determining the need for the project. Holly seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration of resolution reapproving the building corporation.
So, as you guys know, that is your associated group, they're the ones who do the owning of the buildings while you guys lease it back. So you have to formally approve them to reorganize, and then to do all their needs to give the asset.
Okay, motion?
I move to approve the resolution reapproving the building corporation.
I'll second it.
Holly made the motion to approve the resolution reapproving building corporation. Wade seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
Yes, and Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, considerate, item E, consideration of advanced reporting for school care Medicaid billing, Dr. Smith?
Yeah, so in your packets, uh, you see the agreement for school care to provide our Medicaid billing. Um, this is a service that allows us to recapture some of our, uh, nursing service expenses, um, for students to follow into the Medicaid guidelines.
Questions?
I move to approve the school care Medicaid billing agreement.
I'll second it.
Lee made the motion to approve school care Medicaid billing agreement, Wade, Wade seconded it, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Penrod, I know you gotta go, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item F, annual review of bus route and safety policies. Brad, I'm for it.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Per Indiana Code twenty dash twenty-seven dash ten dash point five, annual review of school bus routes and school bus safety policies on or before September first, twenty nineteen. And each September first thereafter, a school corporation charter school and accredited non-public school that provides transportation for students must review the school's school bus routes and school bus safety policies to improve the safety of students and adults. Just here to state that I did that. Um, and I do want to thank, uh, the Putnam County Highway Department, because they were very helpful as the school year started, there was a lot of overgrowth, um, in some of those corners and intersections where the buses, uh, would pick, pick up and drop off students, but they were real quick about getting out there and cutting those back. Um, we also had a few new bus stops along Manhattan Road. Um, one area that we were trying to avoid, but kind of became inevitable with the ridership that we had, that we had some signs installed that, uh, Putnam County Highway put in for us, that way it'll work motorists, that bus stops coming up, so that would slow them down for that. And then also, I want to thank the Putnam County Sheriff's Department and Indiana State Police for their assistance with stop arm violations. Um, so you know, with us having a lot of stops along forty, Mount Meridian, Putnamville, we get a lot of stop arm violations in those areas and others. Um, and so we turn those over to the Sheriff's Department, and go about processing those, getting out tickets, things like that. And there's any questions, I'll answer those.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Item G, consideration of Mesa Child Abuse Prevention MOU.
Muncie.
Yes, it's Mrs. Muncie, thank you.
I'm presenting for Mrs. Nelson tonight, so she has a golf outing, so she is there with our students. So every year, the schools are meant to, um, teach about child abuse, sexual abuse by December fifteenth. And Mrs. Nelson has taught these lessons in the past using the Moby Burr Foundation, um, and I had done the same when I was in Green Castle, so, um, I'm very familiar with this program. We've paid for it in the past with Title Four funds, but, um, this year Purdue is providing that same program at zero cost to schools. Um, but to participate in the program, we have to sign an MOU. Um, so they will, um, provide that for the elementary schools. And Mrs. Nelson is currently going to be teaching the lessons in our elementary schools during September. So she has it already set for Central and Fillmore. So, we just need the board to approve by the MOU for us to have free through Purdue.
So it's, it's a, is it a program like the old, um, say no to drugs, where they give you all the curriculum and resources for Jill to use in the classroom?
So this is, um, something, it's a follow the safety rules, and so, don't make fun of me, but this is like, I'm still with it because I was an elementary, I am an elementary teacher. So the first thing is, no, what's up? Spot red flags, make a move, talk it out, no blame, no shame. So we talk about all of our good safety rules for our kids, so that they know these, if something's happening, if they spot red flags, tell someone, talk to a trusted adult, things like that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was good.
I liked it.
It's our primary, right?
Love it, thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm going to approve the Mesa Child Abuse Prevention MOU.
I'll second it.
That Lee? Oh, that was Wade. Where? Okay, Holly made the motion to approve the Mesa Child Abuse Prevention MOU. Wade seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. H, consideration of Central Elementary surplus, Dr. Smith?
Uh, Central Elementary and Jennifer Slaughter, our library and media specialists, uh, have been busy, again, clearing out more end-of-life items, all shown in your board packets, uh, we're just seeking approval of those, the surplus of those for Central Elementary.
I move to approve the Central Elementary surplus.
I'll second.
Lee made the motion to approve the Central Elementary surplus, Holly seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
J, consideration of elementary school handbook updates.
Yeah.
Should we get a dance on this one, too?
Exactly, yeah, what do we get for this one?
I hope so.
Um, so because of the legislature and how they've changed our attendance policies and things like this, um, we were looking through it, and it happened, and we, it'd be, um, more like the high school, and we didn't realize that we were so different. And so, we had, um, Mr. Rounds, who his son left thirty-five minutes early from school, and we counted it as a half a day, because we had had that in our current language, ten to thirty minutes, um, and after that, it's a half day. But they're there for most of the day, and so if he's leaving at two o'clock, that's an early dismissal, not a half day. So we're proposing, um, that language to be more like what the high school is. So like, if they miss up to three, four periods, then it's not counted as a half day until they've missed that, right? So, we just want it to be more on the same page.
Okay. All right, any questions?
I like that.
You know, we were kind of shooting ourselves in the chat with them.
Yeah.
This should be easier to manage, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I move to approve the elementary school handbook update.
I'll second it.
Wade made the motion to approve the elementary school handbook updates, Lee seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Um. L, consideration of out-of-state field trip, Dr. Smith?
As per our policy, overnight or out-of-state field trips require school board approval. Uh, therefore, in your packets, there's an out-of-state field trip request for a volleyball team. Uh, we seek your approval so they can have those great experiences.
Are, you know, are they doing that for like a team-building thing?
I assume so.
Is it, isn't that the beginning of the season? I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's the end of the season. It's, it's, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Coming up, so. Yeah, thank you.
I move to approve the field trip request.
I'll second it.
Lee made the motion to approve the field trip request, Wade seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes, Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Letter M, consideration of five-star services agreement, this was added.
It was the add-on, yeah, I do apologize for this late add-on. Um, I actually had a meeting with Five Star, uh, today, and they came, uh, they realized that our agreement was, um, expiring. And so we made this last-minute, um, adjustment. Um, because of that, though, they locked in our prices as what we're currently paying with no increase. So, um, so anyway, I just asked for you to, uh, approve this updated five-star agreement so we can continue to pay Aaron. Just kidding, no, just, they do, they're a great vendor, they do really good stuff, uh, for us with our technology, and so, um, but we like Aaron, too, so, yeah.
Okay.
For that price of the agreement, uh, it's like cost-effective or potential savings, have you looked into what it would be to maybe hire our own director of technology?
We have, we're just trying to find those people.
Right.
And keep them employed, Five Star has a hard time finding people, and they're, that's their, their main, um, you know, their, their main business, and so it's their, their main business. And so it's, it's hard for school systems to do that. That's why a lot of schools, most schools around here have employed Five Star.
Okay, motion?
I move to approve the Five Star Service Agreement.
I'll second it.
Lee made the motion to approve the Five Star Services Agreement. Wade seconded that, vote by roll call, Lee?
Yes.
Wade?
Yes.
Holly?
Yes.
I vote yes. Joe?
Yes.
Other business, none, and we are to the superintendent's report.
I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. We've all had a long week already. It's, it seems like Friday, but it's Wednesday. So just want to thank all the administrators and the teachers, all the support staff, our custodians, bus drivers, and anybody else I just forgot. But it's been a fantastic start to the year, and it does take a great team to do that. And I think here at South, we have an amazing team, and it's showing in how this year is coming along already. Secondly, did enjoy my time with the board members that were able to go to the IASBA conference earlier this week. And it just shows that across the board, we're setting an example, is because we say all staff and all students learn high. Are all staff and all students learn at high levels here at South Putnam, and you guys are setting the standard for that. So it's, we continue to learn, we continue to get better at everything that we do, and thanks for setting that example.
Thank you. All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. Our next regular school board meeting will be held on Wednesday, October 22nd at 6:00 PM, right here.